...items that were stipulated in the published agenda, we cannot add agenda items at a special meeting, so remain within that agenda. And as you probably all know, our agenda tonight will be to look at budget proposals for a second referendum. We'll get into the details of the referendum results from last night, but the sum of this is that the referendum failed by 21 votes. It was 517 in favor of adopting the budget and 538 opposed to adopting the budget. And so, as a result, the budget was not adopted. We will have our discussion tonight. The Board of Finance at the end of this evening will come out with a proposed budget proposal to vote in town. The Board of Selectmen will meet, I guess tomorrow, Jim, to set a referendum date which is tentatively May 12th. So that's essentially where we are right now. The next steps would be that vote, and subsequent to that, we'll determine the Board of Finance will meet again in a special meeting with a very similar agenda to tonight, which basically says if the budget is adopted, the Board of Finance sets a mill rate. If the budget is not adopted, then the Board of Finance comes back and deliberates, as we will tonight, to come with another budget proposal. We will get into public comment in just a second. I do have a favor to ask, in the center, or two favors actually, because I do anticipate that this will be a fairly lengthy Board of Finance meeting. I would ask, first, that we limit ourselves to one comment per person, and secondly, I would appreciate also if we can limit those comments to no more than three minutes each to give everyone the opportunity to speak and at the same time enable the Board to get into its business at a relatively early hour and then move on. You will obviously have public comment at the end of the meeting as well, part of our agenda as we go forward. So with that, as an introduction, I will call the meeting to order, and now Karen is here. Dan, I'm afraid you are not a voting member, so.
Hi, Dan.
So with that as introduction, let me open the Board of Public Comment report.
Yeah, these heavy talkies are state representatives, have to do. And while you guys have been dancing around numbers today, this is going to be coming down quite. Basically, the Democratic control legislatures are going to be looking for $1.8 billion in new taxes this year. That would be an expanded sales tax base to basically include about everything that is nailed down under the sales tax. And then also increase the tax on the rich, retroactive last year. So if you're in the rich, consider that both working most active places are going to get you at the state level. So you've got to really think of these things when you're starting to play around with your numbers here. This is going to impact everybody. That's $1.8 billion, a lot of money on top of it. $20 billion are already taxed. So that's my comment.
Other comments? Okay. See, no. Yes?
Sharon Shepherd, Florida Washington State. Just as a parent, we came to you at the Board of Finance and Board of Education this year to address class sizes, and they're very large in the elementary school. And while I know you need to consider the vote that happened yesterday, I ask you to and urge you to consider the fact that the Board of Education budget as presented was trying to allow for the addition of teachers to lessen the class sizes, to lower the class sizes next year. They've been high for three years. Then I ask you to consider that as you make your new guidance, that while I understand things are going to go down, the level of which that you go down, I ask you to consider the impact that it will have on the ability of the Board of Education to higher budget to be able to lower the class sizes that were not addressed in the fall and have not been addressed due to budget. So I just ask you to take that into consideration.
Thank you.
We have stamp 157, Newgate. A couple of things. First of all, I want to make a comment about the Board of Finance meeting that followed the public hearing at the high school. Mr. Haslam, one of the Board of Finance members commented that he was impressed with the ratio of the folks speaking up for higher budgets versus those speaking up for, shall we say, fiscal restraint. And the ratio was about 20 to 2 or something like that at the public hearing. And I, my point here is to have the members of the Board of Finance dispense with that notion, because the purpose of public, of public comment, town hall meetings and the like, is to bring to the fore issues that the Board or political candidates or whoever may not be aware of, issue, safety issues in town, or anecdotal evidence of what's going on. But the purpose of public comment is not to substitute for a public vote, for a public referendum. And in my opinion, the events at the annual public hearing on the budget are nothing more than an organized strategy by individuals to persuade the Board of Finance otherwise. And again, an organized strategy to basically play the Board of Finance for fools, okay? And I'm just calling it as I see it. And they're, what they're trying to do is to get the Board of Finance to substitute the 20 or 30 members at the public hearing for the 1,000, 2,000, or 3,000 members of the voting public. And that's not the purpose of the, of public comment. I just want to point that out to members of the Board. Secondly, Dave, I see you missed the, you missed any comment about the, about the advisory questions, which were strikingly in favor of a lower bu, of a lower budget. The ratio for the, for the town budget was about 1 to 2 in terms of lowering the budget. The ratio for lowering the school budget was about, was about 3 to 2 in favor of lowering the school budget. So given that, I would suggest a 20% lowering of the budget, which sounds about right in terms of the ratio. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
Yeah. Interesting going after that comment, because I would just point out that we still need to keep in mind that the referendum vote was a very small fraction of the town's population. And also, when East Ramby, 21 votes may be considered a landslide, it's a very small percentage difference, so I would keep that in mind as well. I'd also like to remind the Board, if I could, Norm, I just wanted to remind the Board that the Board of Education presented a very practical budget with no drama, no alarms. We tried to be very transparent in everything we did. There wasn't any hidden strategy with it. I want to call your attention to a pie chart that I held up in my presentation, where I showed that there was approximately 12% of the budget that we really had the opportunity to affect, that the remainder of it was pretty much controlled by commodities, contracts, et cetera. That 12%, while being a very small percentage, affects virtually every student in the classroom, so in the district. So when you start to look at that particular area, there isn't a whole lot of money to be saved, and it affects a great number of students. Where this kind of boils down to, from my perspective, is that there's two remaining things. The first is the late bus. So if there's a slight reduction, you're looking at the late bus. If there's a significant reduction, you're looking at the addition of teachers that we asked for. Now, keep in mind that the additional teachers are needed to address the student-teacher ratios per the Board of Education guidelines, which govern quality of education, but also there's physical constraints. We simply cannot fit all of the kids into those classrooms at Albert. So I just want to point out, slight reduction, probably you're hitting the late bus. More significant reduction, you're reducing those additional teachers and putting everyone back in the same situation we were in at the beginning of the school year. That's my read on where we're at at this point. And again, we tried to be extremely transparent and make sure that we presented everything in a way that it could easily be understood, and again, without any alarms, without any hidden agendas or anything like that. I also want to keep in mind that while we're talking about numbers this evening, those numbers represent people. And those people, in a large way, are our children and grandchildren. So while we may be saving a percentage here, or amount here, or a 20% number, we're talking about the quality of our education to our children and grandchildren. They're going to be our doctors. They're going to be taking care of us. They deserve the same advantages that all of us have. So I just ask that you keep that in mind during your deliberations.
Thank you, Dan.
I'm Yvonne Mule, Sage Lane. I think it boils down to all this rhetoric. Goes down to you have to do your duty, which is, take a look at the numbers, the vote spoke for itself, whether it's one vote, or 50 votes, or whatever. One vote is enough to change your mind that says, hey, we're a little bit too high, we got to tone it down. Whether it's cutting the, you know, town or Board of Ed, it's for those boards to manage what they have. I don't think that some of the boards are managing what they have properly. So that's my opinion, and I think that now you should just bear that in mind, that it should be your opinion based on that one vote that says, you're too high, bring it down. Thank you.
Listen, Mark, it's familiar, I just sensed the issue of safety and physical class size is brought up in schools. I have a seven-year-old boy who sits in a classroom in Albert School, and he's actually the last seat away from the door. Okay, so imagine if there was, that forbidden emergency, which I'm sure this has all been practiced, but if there is a real emergency, he is the last person sitting in that classroom on this side of the room away from the door. So imagine if that was your kid. I mean, it's just pretty scary. Something needs to be done to address the class size issue in physical locations in the school. And I do believe the Board of Education came in with a budget that was what you had given them as far as the guidelines, so I think they did a good job on what they were looking to do. So just please consider that. Thank you.
Yes?
Carrie Pyker, I'm Coppergate. I have to confess to the group that my education was severely damaged, because when I was in elementary school, there were two classes in the same room, and the class size was 35 to 40. Now, I managed to somehow survive that. I think that we need to challenge the Board of Education to do something a little more innovative about the cost of education in East Ramby. And I wonder whether we really should have a high school with a size that we, that our high school has in a town this size, or whether we should do a rigorous study of seeing whether there is benefit to transporting our high school to its students to one of the neighboring towns.
Yes?
I'm Kerry Tracy, number seven, Southwood Lane. I've, I've got one of those kids in those schools, in the crowded schools, and I just want to encourage the Board to remind you that, just, just like was mentioned earlier, that these numbers that you guys are crunching are our kids. And all of, as far as I'm concerned, all of this really started for us this year in September, when we were talking about overcrowded classrooms. Truly, that needs to be the thing that is addressed, that that's the question. I guess that's it.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you all for your comments. We'll move on to the minutes from April 7th, which were circulated electronically. Move to approve? Second. Motion and second to approve is written. Any additions or corrections? If you're none of those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Any extensions? Motion is Kerry. In terms of communication and correspondence, at your place, you have three items. One is the General Government Monthly Report for the month of March, that we'll talk about as we get to the end of our agenda. The second is the headlines for April 2015. And the third is a summary of referendum statistics that we'll talk about as new business item 5A. So if there's no further communication and correspondence, then we'll move on. Okay, so let's move to that referendum statistics. We have about 3,500 voters registered as voters in town. All of them are eligible to vote. In addition, a referendum dealing with the budget, people who own property, which is listed on the grant list, for $1,000 or more are eligible to vote, even if they are not listed on the voter list, and I'm told by the assessor that 13 individuals exercised their right. So of the 1,055 votes that were recorded on the budget question, 13 of those were people not on the voter list, which means that our turnout of registered voters was approximately 30%. And if we look at the results of that, the yeses for the budget were 517, or 49% of those who voted no, 538 or 51% of those who voted. Now, to tackle that relative to the registered voters on the voter list, that basically means that about 14%, 14.7% of the registered voters voted against, voted in favor of adopting the budget, 15.3% voted against adopting the budget, and 70% of the population of the registered voters stayed home. So it's, I guess as someone who's been involved in elections for a long time, it peeves me to think that 70% of the people chose not to exercise their right to vote. But that's, that's a personal opinion, so I'll move on from that. If we look at the...
Run that, the 13th item again, so they don't, so people don't have to register?
They don't have to be registered voters.
They just show up with what?
They show up, they talk to the, they talk to the reg, to the assessor, who is present at the polls all day, and they, she will certify that they own sufficient property listed on the grant list.
It also allows for businesses to vote.
Absolutely.
They may not be residents of town.
Right.
Who haven't, you know?
Yes.
Right, because it's budget-related. It's anyone who has a vested interest in the outcome of the budget.
Yeah, I was just trying to think of a business owner that's, what, a non-resident but owns property, or they have to prove ownership as well of the entity?
Yeah.
There is, there is a process for determining if they are, if they can vote on behalf of the business. So yeah, so 13 of those votes were from people who were not registered voters. If we look at the advisory questions, and this was brought up during our comments, on the general government side, 642 of those who voted for that question, or 67% of the, of the voters who voted for, expressed an opinion, wanted the general government budget lower, 310 wanted it higher, that's about 32 or 33% on the Board of Education, 597, or roughly 60% of those who voted on the question, said that the Board of Education budget should be lower, 403 said that the budget should be higher, that's about 40%. So as the individual who spoke during the comments earlier, it's about a 2 to 1 ratio on the general government side and a 60/40 ratio on Board of Education. So that's, that's really the background of where we are in terms of, of looking at our referendum results. Any further questions on that, or we'll move on? Okay. In terms of revenue projections, the Appropriations Committee has done its budget proposal at this point. The Connecticut Conference of Municipalities produced an analysis of that, and it is flopping $24 different from the governor's proposal for the town of East Ramby. Actually, the Appropriations Committee, I think, would give us $24 in dollars for that application. Otherwise, it's the same numbers as the governor's, so there's really no change in those numbers since we looked at them just after the, after the public hearing and the Board's action at that point.
Does UCM have that online for all towns, or is that...
I believe it's online. I, I get it through an email system, but I believe it's online.
So specific to East Ramby that you get the information?
They do, they do an analysis of what the Appropriations Committee has put out. They do it for certain grants, basically for the major ones, education cost sharing, adult education, transportation, and the major grants on the non-education side generally. Okay, so if there are no further questions on the revenue projections, we'll get to the meat of the meeting, and that is to look to consider a revised budget proposal. I think we've had the opportunity to, excuse me, sort of chew on the whole question of budget proposals at some time. So I would ask at this point, thoughts for where we go next? I think one of the things that's important to note, and probably we didn't highlight sufficiently during the, during the run-up to the, is that the proposed budget included $100,000 increase in the, in the money that was to be set aside for the capital reserve fund. And that was primarily geared toward looking at our fiscal responsibility for maintaining town assets. And as you recall, we did have a committee of folks who looked at our capital assets in the town, those existing capital assets, not proposals. They made some recommendations which certainly dwarf our ability to fund at this point. And so in our discussions and deliberations, we had incorporated a $100,000 increase during fiscal '16, so for, from $450,000 set aside this year to $550,000 next year. That is within the bottom line budget. It does not affect either of the operating budgets. So that is an item that certainly was present in the information that was defined by, I shouldn't have highlighted. So that was just something that I wanted to make sure we're all...
That occurred to me, we were looking at these, these questions that Jim had formulated for the, for the, it might, have we ever considered putting the capital question in there? I mean, because there is a yearly increase/decrease whatever we do.
Well, we actually, the Board has elected, solicited the Board of Finance input on the questions. Those questions were questions from the Board of Finance.
I'm just saying, has it ever been, I'm just, I, in my frame...
Have we done that in the...
Yeah, have we ever considered that?
Well, I mean, we've considered it, we haven't done it.
Okay.
Got to say that we can't. Most years, capital is not an increase.
Right, that's, and that's really why I wanted to highlight it, because it was, it was an increase this year.
Yeah, that occurred to me, looking at the questions.
As our infrastructure ages, we're in a situation where that is something that we, we had talked about doing, but we haven't highlighted that, I think, in our presentations. Okay, so the major item we have on the table tonight is to consider a revised budget proposal, given the information we have from the vote. This would go back, in a couple of weeks, would go back to public consideration at another referendum, so. I'm not sure which end of the table wants to start. Karen, are you up for doing this?
No.
Norm?
Well, I am tempted to say no, but...
Do we want to have a motion so we can discuss it, or just we want to have opinions?
If you want to have a motion first, that would, I mean, it always helps...
And I didn't mean to cut you off, if you want to go ahead, we can have something to at least debate rather than...
Yeah.
Opinions can come out.
Have a straw, man, here in the process.
That's fine, Mark. Please.
I don't know, I assume that was preface to a motion.
Yeah, yeah, I waited.
I thought it was a rhetorical flush.
Yeah. So I move that we put forth a town budget totaling, let me give you the pieces. General Government, $4,546,000. Board of Education, $15,610,000. Capital, $550,000. And the debt service, I believe, is at $675,263.
The non-negotiable part. That is, that is the non-negotiable part, if we, if we want to maintain our bond rating. So we will, we'll address that.
Kelly, I believe that totals, if you need it for the motion, $21,381,263. The, that's the motion.
Okay, is there a second to get that on the floor? I will second it to get it on the floor if no one else will answer. So, okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor for discussion.
Just a question of what percentage is that then?
Well, yeah, okay, let me go. There's, it's a, it's a, about a 30 basis point reduction, so 0.3% reduction on each of the operating budget as previously proposed. So instead of 2.8% increase on the general government, it would be 248 or 2 and 1/2. Instead of the 3.5 on the Board of Education, it will be 3.2. So both reduced by 0.3%. I did model in the tax, the mill rate that we were contemplating as potentially being set after the budget passes referendum, which was previously said at around 2.4, or anticipated around 2.7% as a mill rate increase. This would require a 2% instead of a 2.7. 3.4.
What was it prior, 30 plus 6?
Yes, yes. And that got you to basically 2.7% tax increase. That was, this will bring the tax increase down to 2%.
Okay.
May I suggest that in light of the work that Mark has already done, that he begin with his commentary on how these percentages were arrived at and his support or lack thereof with, in relation to them, for two reasons. One, I think that makes sense since he has proposed this motion, and secondly, because it gives me more time to think about it.
Karen, yeah. Mark, do you want to, I mean, do you have any additional comments?
Oh, no, no, go ahead, Norm. I just want to explain some of the rationale... I just want to explain some of the rationale and just less about the rationale.
Thank you for giving me the chance to go ahead, but I'm looking in light of this motion that you put forward for you to have the initial commentary, either in support of or not.
In support?
Of your motion.
What's the thinking that supports your motion?
I support my motion immediately.
And what's the rationale?
Or if you don't.
Oh, so in general, the rationale is, I believe, as the vote failed, right, I think that, I read that as an implicit, we need a reduction. It was certainly in the advisory questions, which at the last meeting I said, weren't that meaningful to me, because there's a lot of interpretation. You could have people that are very principled in terms of wanting a higher budget for one board or the other and voting no, because it's too low, right? So that's a tough vote to take, but, you know, that's possible. There are people that did not answer the question, so that would presume that, I think the question's biased. Would you like your taxes to go higher or lower? People that don't answer, I think, would say, gee, I prefer them not be higher, but I don't feel that they should be lower. So it's an abstention. Again, all interpretation in the cloud of advisory questions that we have to parse through. The rationale on the reductions are, I believe, something needs to be somewhat meaningful in terms of the next referendum, that we can't just blindly ignore the vote that came out this time and say, let's try it again at the same, and hope for something different. And at the same time, I don't think we should be taking drastic measures at this point, given the level of need on the general government side. I thought that budget was appropriate and necessary. And the Board of Education worked well through this whole process, did articulate a number of things where they were going to make this budget work for the needs for the teachers, restoring the late buses and services, and basically trying to hold within the guidance this board originally provided. That's my rationale.
Okay, other comments?
Are you ready or do you want me to jump in?
No, we don't need to go in order.
Yeah, okay, I just see if he's still...
I'm ready when the rest of you wear up. Me and that panelists do much.
I think that's a really important point, that the voters did come out, they did express their opinions and their right to vote, and reducing it, at least to show that there's response to their vote. And I think that's a reasonable amount to look at what the tax rate would be, if it truly would only increase taxes by two percent, I think that's a lot more palatable to voters. You know, I think that it's hard when people want certain things in their budget, but that's part of managing a budget, and I have faced it with people's capabilities, they can find a way to reduce the budgets. It's not huge cuts. In fact, it's not cuts, a lot of additional money was given. And there's certainly, you know, I do need to say that there's other options than just the two options mentioned as far as reducing the proposed education budget. And someone mentioned imagination. I think that some creative ways can be used to reduce that budget without affecting teachers. So I support Mark's proposal.
Okay, thank you. Other comments?
I concur with the first two members of our board that some reaction to the town vote is essential. I don't feel that we can observe votes that are headed in one direction and make no change at all. I also concur with the thought that the Board of Education has done a very, I was going to use the word superior, and that may be a little too strong, but I think they've done a very fine job this year. And having listened to their various presentations, I do feel that we absolutely must address this issue of too many kids in some of those lower classes. That bothers me a great deal. So some element of reduction that preserves the ability to address that in a positive way is, in my mind at least, critical. However, in thinking about this over the past few weeks and indeed days, I honestly have become troubled with how much money overall goes into the education process in our state. I think, well, I know, I'm positive about our local system, but consider the fact that over the last few years, we have added the concept of charter schools, magnet schools, and if one looks back at the, if one looks back at the rate of increase, considering also the compounding influence that has attended our reaction, the Board of Finance's reaction to the Board of Education needs, I can't imagine someone coming to the conclusion that we haven't been more than supportive. So those things run through my mind. They are honest thoughts. I know that some of you will not agree with them, but I guess that's why we're here. So with that sort of commentary, may I once more encourage those who are engaged with, working with the union groups in town, and to the extent we can influence union negotiations at the state level, I think it is time to put our foot down. I don't mean that in a negative way, I truly don't, but I think these increases have gotten rather out of control. So in an effort not to have me go on for the next three hours, let me say that my position is to, and Mark, I don't know what your numbers have in relation to the Board of Education's ability to address this overcrowding issue. I don't know whether they would cover that or not, I guess that's for them to decide. But I feel our Board of Education is doing a very good job. They had a terrific accolade, what, Christine, a year or two ago, or is it more with this distinguished school of the year, or some, what I perceive was a pretty meaningful accolade. They could not have achieved that, it seems to me, without having performed well. I need to ask at this point, David, what was the, what was the percentage, the original percentage that we asked them to respond to? Is that three point four seven?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. And Mark, how do your proposals, forgetting the numbers for a moment, how do your proposals relate to those percentage increases for the Board of Finance, the Board of, the general government, I think, is still two point eight in those proposals?
Right now, the motion...
Ah, two point five, okay, I heard that.
So they, at the referendum, they were two point eight percent and three point five four. I think that two point eight was consistent with the guidance, and the three five four was slightly higher than the three four seven guidance. So the two point eight and three five four are both currently in the motion, reduced by about...
The three tenths of a percent?
Yes.
I guess what I'd say is that I would probably, and I do want to give this more thought before we're through this, I would probably vote in favor of those numbers, but I would like to hear from the Board of Education, you know, can that work within the context of this overcrowding issue?
Norm, this really isn't, we don't want to spend a lot of time, I mean, I think what we have to do is to look at the referendum results. We have a proposal at this point in responding to those, and I think at this juncture, I mean, the Board of Education, we're sort of popping numbers out to the Board of Education. I don't think it's appropriate to ask them to respond to numbers that they haven't seen before. Now, they do have a budget workshop scheduled for tomorrow night.
Yes, I know that.
At which I believe they would be addressing whatever comes out of this discussion.
My intent, please.
I just, this is not an appropriate time, I think, for a Q and A of the boards. I think we need to, we need to look at what our response is to the referendum results and to the proposal that was put out of the referendum, and then we as a board need to make that decision. And I know we've heard tonight about the impact of these dollars on individuals and so forth, and I can appreciate that, but at this juncture, we have to look at this as a financial issue.
My intent is not a Q and A with the Board of Education, but at some point, soon I hope, I would like to know what the damage is on this overcrowding issue. That absolutely needs to be addressed, in my mind, so...
I think, I would suggest you attend their budget workshop tomorrow night. I think that's really where we're going to see what the impact is. So are there other comments at this juncture?
That's a good suggestion.
Yeah, I think, oh, Mark, it was two point five for the government, is it three point three four for the...
Three two one.
Three two one?
Is the percentage increase under the motion for the Board of Ed? Yeah.
Yeah, it's really close to what my numbers were. It's kind of what I was going to be proposing. But, you know, myself too is concerned with the cost every year that the school budget goes up, and I know that there's a lot of, you know, constraints as far as outside of the contracts, and I think the Board of Education did a wonderful job, you know, being transparent and laying out everything in front of us. They definitely have done a good job, and Jim also with the, with the local general government. You know, I just, I look at these numbers and then I look at, you know, what the voters have voted here, and, you know, I feel the same way, Mark and Norm, and feel like that they, you know, we need to decrease this a little bit, but there are a lot of concerns with the Board of Education, I mean, as far as the teachers go. I mean, we lose a late bus, yeah, that's something, but I think that's something that you guys can live with, that that's what you choose to do. And, you know, I think the numbers that are down around two, I'd like to see one point eight tax increase, but if it's a two percent, you know, you're just kind of fooling around with numbers at that point. So I would agree with what Mark's assessment is.
Okay.
Sure. All right, I'll go. I found the first one interesting. The government, should the proposal for the government budget be higher or lower? At the April seventh meeting, when Jim gave a presentation, I don't think there was any public comment after his presentation, either for or against it. And I think every time Jim gave a presentation, I didn't hear opposition for it. So I'm kind of confused on that, why there was such a difference, a sixty-seven percent and a thirty-two percent. I guess you just, how do you read into that? You know, Mark, I think you've offered some suggestions to that. But I just didn't hear the outcry that Jim's budget was ridiculous. You look at the Board of Education's, it's a little bit, a little bit closer, and I understand that there was some opposition to that budget. I would recommend a three point four seven percent increase for the Board of Education and a two point seven for the general government.
Okay.
And keep the same as debt and capital reserve. So ten thousand on the deduction, ten thousand on the Board of Ed, and ten thousand on general government.
Can I just respond to her? Or just? So Dan, I like the point you made about the difference what we see in the vote and the advisory questions and what we see at the meetings, and I think that does further drive home the point that, you know, the thirty, the fifty, the more the better at the meetings often does not represent the thousand people that came out to vote, and unfortunately, the other two thousand that stayed home, whether they have an opinion or not, we wouldn't know that.
I mean, it would be nice if the opinions get up to fifty percent of the voting population.
But it does, it does highlight the difference between what we see as representation at the meetings versus what the voter turnout represents.
Choose different than twenty-one votes when it came down to it?
Norm, in terms of the opinions, when we're talking about the advisory questions, you didn't hear any, you know, anything against...
I didn't hear any, I didn't hear anything against Jim's budget.
Right, but you're surprised at the advisory questions?
I'm surprised at the gap. Over three hundred and thirty-two people thought it was the difference between...
I think that tells me it's, the people at the meetings are not representative. It's not a sample representation of the entire population that's voting. Otherwise, we hear dissension among the budgets, right?
Or it's just more of an esoteric commentary that, yeah, I would like them to spend less money, but I wouldn't want my services to be cut. It's not like you're asking them, would you accept the services to be cut if we cut your budget? So...
You can express the same opinion either way, but yeah, it's the point of like, what's the point of the advisory questions and how do you read them?
They're biased, like you said at one of the other meetings, that's the way I look at it, you know? But it is a guidance for us to some degree.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Karen?
Well, I, just to segue off of that conversation, if you were to use that as a sort of guidance, I think that, it's the first time that I remember ever seeing this spread, where you had more people thinking that the Board of Selectmen budget is too high than the Board of Ed. I've never seen that before. Usually, there's a much larger spread oftentimes. And the other one that kind of surprised me was the number of people that thought the Board of Ed should be higher. I've never seen, I mean, the spread oftentimes was much greater. That being said, I think you got to take them with a grain of salt, because it is, it's somewhat of a question that anybody would answer if you're going in there and you're voting to raise your taxes. You got to remember that not five hundred and thirty, five hundred and seventeen people voted yes, but then quite a few of those voted that the budgets were too high. So that's, you know, it's, if you were pumping your gas, would you check off that it was too high when you were leaving the station?
Probably.
Yeah. I mean, you still got to pay, it doesn't mean you wouldn't buy the gas and you wouldn't take proper care of your family by buying gas, so you could drive the kids to school and get to work and all that. But that's, that's why I have a problem with these questions. That being said, I mean, that also brings up the whole public meeting question. I mean, the argument that that's not representative of the public, I think, is a little bit misleading also, because those are the people that are motivated enough to get out and hear the facts. I mean, those are people that had, that were passionate enough to come out and show what they felt. That being said, there also was a fairly organized drive to drive out the no vote with robo calls and much of which was misleading. I mean, so you take the, I mean, the call itself, I think, represented the tax increase of seven hundred and fifty... I mean, so you take the, I mean, the, the call itself, I think, represented the tax increase of seven hundred and fifty.
That's the budget increase, not tax increase.
No, you want to hear the call, I bet it on my phone, it says tax increase.
I didn't get the robo call, I got the postcard.
Yeah, it did, that's exactly what it said. They said, vote no against a tax increase of seven hundred and some odd thousand dollars, which was misleading. I mean, that's not the actual dollar figure of the tax increase. Anyway, that being said, I think that, that the referendum is rife with, with miscommunication. I don't, at the same time, question that, you know, that it did fail. And a, a part of my concern, frankly, coming out of the last couple of meetings, was that there was a demoralizing factor for a lot of the parents. That's about was my concern, that they weren't going to come out and vote because they felt like they had come forward three times this year with concerns at different meetings and felt like that hadn't been responded to. That was my, I mean, I'll be honest, if I walked in there and voted the way that I felt, I would have voted no, it's too low. I mean, and that's the concern that, that going forward, that we're, you know, I think we're really kind of beating up this town with these, with these failure to respond to the people that come out to the town meetings and, and, or the, the budget hearings year after year. Occasionally, we've responded, but I think this year, it struck me that there was a class size issue earlier in the year that we didn't address, that we could have fairly quickly dealt with, and I think given people a sense of responding to their needs. But I, I, I'm much more concerned about the overall direction of the school system. I think, you know, I just get this sense that it's being bled off and, and the budgets, you know, even though we are, we are trying to respond as best we can, I think we have, you know, financially, you know, nobody's ever going to be happy on this board, I suppose, and nobody's ever going to be happy in the public. But I think we've, we've really put a lot of effort into funding it properly. And we've done a decent job of keeping the, you know, the skeleton in place so that people could kind of build on that if the economy was to improve or whatever. But I, that's, those are my concerns. That being said, getting back to, to the motion at hand, I think that I wouldn't support it. What I would support is a motion. One other thing I wanted to mention, this is in relation to Norm. I think, Norm, that they, they already answered that, that they couldn't add the teachers or deal with the class size if they didn't get fairly close to what they budgeted. I mean, the four point, four point three or whatever the figure was that they'd asked for was reduced to the three five, and they still managed, with a lot of accolades from us, by the way, they still managed to deal with the class size issue. And I was, you know, even though I didn't think that that was sufficient at that point, I, you know, I did vote yes for the referendum because I think that that's the best we can do as a town at the moment. That being said, I wouldn't support an additional reduction. What I, like, what I was going to say is I would support, oddly enough, the five-year analysis I have reflects a five hundred thousand dollar capital. Here's the, here's the current one. This is with the five fifty?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to defer to this because that's the number that I want to use. I would be in favor of moving, I would be in favor of moving the fifty thousand dollars out of capital so there was an increase of about fifty thousand dollars to capital instead of a hundred, which we'd like to do because frankly, we're going to have to deal with the capital issue, whether we want a budget for it at this point or not. The numbers that I have still reflect a twelve point two percent cash balance, which is in excess of our ten percent goal. And I would grudgingly support a small reduction to the Board of Selectmen budget based on the guidance at hand. The other option that I would like to throw out there is there's, there's also the additional ability to reduce cash balance by maybe another fifty thousand dollars and have that reflected in the mill rate. It's not, it would be my last choice at this point, but, I mean, if that's what we have to do to get it passed. Because frankly, I think if, if we don't address this class size issue, you're going to, you're going to, you run the risk of having an organized group in favor of voting no because it's not high enough. I mean, this is not, this isn't esoteric stuff that people can't wrap their head around at this point. It's, it's kids, you know, in size, classroom size. We're not talking about possible textbook reductions or possible pay to play increases or that. This is, this is hardcore stuff, and I think that that might, that's, we run that risk. But without the drama, I think that we could get this passed if we were to move in that direction without reducing the Board of Ed budget.
Karen, do you have any comments at this point?
I, I can't.
Sorry.
I just have a quick question. Hey, Jim, does this referendum more turn out than previous referendums?
The, when you compared to last year, it was twenty percent versus this year's thirty percent. We traditionally, you know, the year that we had three, I think we ended up close to sixty percent on the third one. I would say we're probably in the forty percent range on the second one. It was, it was an improvement over last year, but certainly needs to be beat up.
Right.
So if we're done commenting, we have, we have a motion. We restate that. It's General Government of four million five hundred and forty six thousand, make sure I'm doing this correct.
Follow.
Which is a two point, roughly two point five, the one under two point five percent increase for a fourteen thousand dollar reduction from the number that went to the referendum last time. Board of Education fifteen million six hundred and ten thousand, which is a three point two percent increase or fifty thousand dollars less than went to the, to the referendum. Capital remains at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is about a twenty two percent increase over current capital allocations. And the debt service is six hundred and seventy five thousand two hundred and sixty three, which is basically our scheduled payment, so we really don't have much flexibility on that. Grand total comes to twenty one million three eighty one two sixty three. And it appears that a tax increase of point six mils to thirty point four was supported out, which is approximately a two percent tax increase as opposed to a two point seven percent, which was, from what we had talked about prior to the referendum. Now, I, I want to make clear that we are not today voting on a tax rate. We would vote on a tax rate when the, when and if a budget passes. We're showing that tax rate as an advisory item for the public to understand at the time they vote that that is the tax rate that the Board of Finance would likely set in place, given the revenue picture from other sources. So with that in mind, I will call for a vote on that, I'm sorry.
Can I just make a, just a quick note on the capital?
Yes.
Because, because as we talk, as you read through that, I'm thinking the budget increases and how we think of these as quote unquote expenditures or next year, an increase in expenditures and the concern around that. The, the capital, the increase in the capital is to set aside additional money that is still subject to town approval for actual expenditure. So it's, it's really a decision recognizing the, we're woefully behind on capital needs in the town that we set aside an additional money into that account. And it doesn't necessarily represent an expenditure today?
No, it does not.
Because the expenditures, anything out of that capital account requires town approval individually.
Right. Yeah, I, I, I think to clarify, I would certainly relate that to basically moving money from your checking account to your savings account. I mean, it's, it's money you've set aside for something, but it's not gone.
Or from your savings account to your checking account, so you can wait and check.
That's when you pull it out, and that's when folks vote on it, when we have the, the opportunity to vote on individual projects.
What are the, what are the actual, I don't have it with me, what are our capital, what are our capital guidelines for the next several years that we've given to the, that we've given to the two boards? What did that reflect? Because we've added this hundred thousand dollars, what were?
I believe that it reflects the numbers that we had in the five-year model, which was, you know, five fifty, six fifty, seven fifty by the time you get to the end of the five years.
So that has, that, that figure had been incorporated last year when we?
When we put our five-year capital plan together, when we updated the plan, I believe we incorporated it. I don't, I don't think I have that with me right now, but.
Right. I'm just curious if it wasn't budgeted by them yet, if, if, whether or not, because that, that would kind of change the, the dynamic a bit if we've already presented to them as their proposed limits for capital, and that was part of it, we basically?
I believe we did, but beyond that, I think the, certainly the, the reason that that's important to me is that we have a substantial amount of infrastructure in the town.
Oh, you don't have to convince me.
So, you know, I, and I think it's important to build that fund up in order to ensure that we have at least, I mean, I don't, I don't think this is as significant a funding as would be designed.
Based on that discussion, I'd be much more in favor of moving it from the cash balance and, and I'd go in that direction.
Okay, so we have that motion. I will call for a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, I believe if I counted right, that's four in favor and two opposed. And you have, Kelly, you have the votes?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so the next referendum will show those funds. Thank you, Mark, for putting that forward. And we'll move on. The item five D on our new business is to request the Board of Selectmen and Education to update status of existing capital and return fund accounts. I know the Board of Education has put something together, I don't know, Jim. At this point, we would request these, if you have the information available, that's helpful. If not, we'll go to the June meeting.
No, I don't have it available.
Okay.
Traditionally, you have.
Normally, we say and come back to us in June. But Joe, as I understand it, you have something you wanted to give us in terms of an update?
Yes. We have a, can you bring the copy for that? I am. Sure. We'll give you an update.
Okay.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. Just looking at this sheet, the column to the far right where the X's appear, those are the lines that we will be able to close out. The column with the heading thirteen, fourteen balance, it really isn't the balance at this point. We're still waiting for those invoices to come in. You'll notice that the largest chunk is the phase one of the school security initiatives, and that is still ongoing as we speak. So there will be invoices, excuse me, to address that particular line. There will also be invoices around the electrical system upgrade. Looks like we will, at this point, we're certain of thirty seven dollars and thirty cents coming back until we know the final amounts for the two items I just mentioned. The work is continuing for the other items that are there. The security piece, we hope to be finished with that by the end of June. So we'll be able to send you some updated information on those lines.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. So we have no old business, we get the monthly reports. On the financial reports, we did accept the treasurer's report from March at our last meeting on April seventh. We have since received reports from the Board of Education and General Government. So let's start with the General Government here, we, we all got copies of that tonight.
So we are, we are trending with no surprises at this point. You've heard from me before on data services, public buildings, police, GPW and utilities. Data services were trending about twenty thousand dollars over. Public buildings, about fifteen thousand, of which half is still removed. Police is thirty five thousand, GPW is forty five thousand, both heavily storm related. Utilities, gas and telephone, it's trending thirteen thousand dollars. Utilities, thirteen thousand of driven by gas. We had fire panels that cost us a thousand dollars a month that went up July one to sixteen hundred dollars. So it was a hundred thousand.
Two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen.
In the, July two thousand fourteen, so the current fiscal year. So that was in excess of seven thousand dollars with no notice and problems in plan.
Okay, any, any questions for Jim?
How do you do it, Jim?
Are you anticipating bottom line at the end of the year?
I would think that we'll probably be into the contingency. And, you know, the, that's all I'm prepared of. But we're into the contingency.
I was including the contingency in that bottom line.
We, we will not be through the contingency until the end of the year. We will have a small balance determined.
Thirty seven fifty? Thirty seven fifty. Okay, on the Board of Ed side, let's see. Some activity in the current month, and I know Sue is not here, I don't know if you have any comments on that.
Just to say that the, the lines where we usually have an issue are trending that way again this year. At this point, we're, it's, it's very, very tight. We do have a number of invoices that will start to come in toward the end of May, but truly, most of our invoices come in in June at the end of the school year. So at this point, I, I would say we're just, we're teetering on the edge.
Among the tuition accounts, five sixty one and five sixty three, is some of that reimbursable from other districts?
We have already accounted for the reimbursements that we anticipated based on the fact that this budget was built with the knowledge of how many students we had out there for whom we could bill back. So that wasn't already in the free up here.
So these funds presumably are, the transfers you've made are necessary to cover those and probably would not be made up by tuition payments.
Right, and we still have tuition bills to come in at the end of the year for magnets and others.
So that's, that's why I was asking the question.
Right.
Any other questions?
Well, there's, there's, part of that's billed out to other districts, but then there's state covers, a certain amount over.
The, the sped reimbursement, yeah.
And.
We, we gave you that number, I think, two hundred and thirty four?
Yeah.
For, for fiscal fifteen?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we, I'm trying to remember if we had incorporated that.
And that was an increase.
It was higher than what you had originally put in your, your plan.
Yes, yeah, we've incorporated that in the current revenue projection, at least as of April eight.
That's an unfortunate presentation that we have to live with because spend occurs here on the Board of Ed, the revenue comes in.
We show it as a general fund revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What was the difference in the, the budgeted amount or the forecast?
You mean?
What was the total?
In terms of reimbursement?
Yeah.
Seventy, roughly seventy thousand dollar more of reimbursement than, than we at first anticipated in the revenue.
Is it, that's pretty much annual, or do we usually run that direction, or is there sometimes a negative?
Negative.
It is sometimes.
Is it?
Sometimes lower than we had anticipated. Past few years, it's been higher.
Yes, I'd say the last five years, it's been a little bit higher each year. This year, it's significant because of the issues that we brought up to your attention last year, that that was the year when we had never seen that many students with, with needs coming in. So that's why there's such a significant jump this, this year.
Excellent.
The nineteen thousand and, and if Sue's not here and I don't recall, and if it's small eyes, but the repairs to buildings, was that a large item? There was a transfer this month?
Oh, yes. We have major building issues going on.
Were they, I don't, was it some large, significant thing? Or is it just, got to fix that piece, fix that problem, fix like ten items?
We have some boiler issues going on and we have some issues with some, a few leaks post, post the snow, snowfall. And we had some repairs to locks and lights, put them in a high. We had some vandalism from. from outside use last, let's say, last three weeks ago, I believe. And so that's been across the last...
We build that out, take security deposit back?
We're trying to hold whoever is accountable accountable. It's always very difficult to get through that sort of thing.
Where were the boiler roof problems? The schools have the boiler roof problems.
I'm sorry, right now, we're having some issues at Aldro. So, for example, we came in Monday morning, we needed some repair there. We also had some issues with the fire alarm system up at the high school where we have dust sensors in the lines that apparently are going bad, and it was triggering alarms over the weekend. And at this point, I spoke with Dave Wing today, and the tech folks are indicating that we need to replace those. Does not yet have total cost on that, but we'll be anticipating that it will be a fairly large invoice.
Just to be clear, so everybody understands, so the sped money that comes back, you budget a certain amount for special ed every year. And if you have excess needs, you absorb that within your budget, and then the town gets reimbursed at a higher rate. Is that fair to say?
Basically, the, I mean, the state formula is that after the municipality has spent four and a half times its per pupil expenditure...
It's the amount over the...
Then the state begins reimbursement at that point. Now, I'm assuming that that reimbursement is subject to the whole allocation at the state level and all this other stuff. I mean, it's not, is the dollar for...
That rule is pretty set in law and statute.
But strictly on a bookkeeping, that's the question, strictly a bookkeeping question. You don't get additional money from the state.
No.
You absorb that within your budget, and then the town is reimbursed at a higher rate for...
That's what the town gets, yeah.
Okay, so that's actually... That goes into the general fund the way that, for example, education cost sharing goes into the general fund.
So that's basically a, this is gonna sound crude, but it's a premium to the town based on your expense.
Yeah, okay.
And I used that justification last year when we talked about supporting the Board of Ed's increase, because there was a significant increase in the...
The sped.
In the sped, and I said, we'll see that on the town side, and we lest not forget where the books balance here, so...
Oh, yeah, I remember that point. I'm just making sure everybody understands that they're absorbing the cost and we're, we get reimbursed, but they don't, exactly, it's not like that money goes back to you guys to reimburse you for your extra cost.
Not directly, no.
Goes to the town.
So, any other questions?
Just a quick question.
Yeah, Dan.
Was there roof damage at Aldro?
No, the roof just has some issues and, you know, continuously. We have someone who goes up there regularly on a sort of a PM plan and checks it for us, but you just never know where the next leak is going to pop.
Aldro's roof's nickname is roof damage, so I just say. Done that way for how long?
As long as we want to kick it down the road is a tangent, right?
I think the problems got exacerbated the year we had to shovel the roof.
Yeah, but it was leaking before that.
Yeah, it was...
The buckets were there for a while.
But it really got exacerbated at that time.
A move that we accept the financials?
Very good. I think you want to speculate that that's the General Government and Board of Education financials, since we already accepted the treasurer's report as a fine product.
Then you're fine.
Even if it was a little tardy tonight. Just kidding. I'm kidding, Kelly.
You can explain that to her. I'm not going to. We have a motion on the floor. I seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion is carried. Thank you all very much. Elementary School Project Committee, I put this on the agenda all the time, but I don't think there's anything new at this juncture.
At this point, nothing new. I did follow up this week with consultant Newfield, who is, you know, is a construction manager, and to make sure that we're still on track with the windows for at Aldro and Jim for summer replacement. Haven't heard that, but so far it is. We're on track.
Just to, just to, for the larger question, does that absorb most of the money?
Yes.
So is there any, gonna be anything left?
The, as I remember, you were pre-ordering...
It might be thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
You need to keep what you didn't see there, but...
Yeah, yeah.
So I won't want to mislead you. There'll be some dollars in there.
Okay, right.
But the bulk will be spent on things we didn't, we weren't sure we were gonna be able to do that we were able to do.
As I remember, you made it at some previous point that there was some pre-ordered stuff that was actually being ordered. Is that correct or am I...
The windows are custom, and those are pre-ordered, and that's three hundred and seventy something thousand dollars.
That's been done.
That's what we would be installing in December.
Right.
Pre-order was done at that point.
Okay, that was my point, that it was, it was going to be waiting when we were ready to do the work, as opposed to our waiting while they were pre-ordered.
God willing and the train's on that time.
That may be a listing proposition. Okay. So that brings us to the end of our agenda and brings us back to public comment. I'll ask again that if folks do have comment, that you have one comment, and that we stay with it.
You referenced that over generous contribution by the state to the special ed fund in town. Didn't make us talk about it. Why don't you just go ahead and put a policy in place saying that when it comes into the state, it goes right back to the Board of Ed? Simple. Solves the problem? Okay? Would you do something?
I agree a thousand percent.
Thank you. Don't agree on something.
Good, I have agreement, okay. Let's do a robocall on that one.
Together.
Just to these guys, though.
But it's okay. Good night, till back in the morning. It's okay.
Okay, any other comments?
So just to respond to that, of course, you all know that we actually asked for that money involved on behalf of the Board of Ed. We came to the Board of Finance and asked for that exact amount of money that's in the town so that we could fund the teachers, and it's gotten out. But earlier, there's also a comment made that comments brought before you should bring your attention to concerns that you are not already aware of. Something you maybe highlighted that I haven't got all the comments, and I would just highlight that, really, if you listened to the parents that came out, it was concerns brought to you through, and don't experience, comments on personal experience by parents and residents in the town. And I wanted to point out that I keep hearing comments and, I don't know how to say it correctly, but this idea that the Board of Ed doesn't spend their money well, or they don't manage their funds with creativity. And I just want to make aware that all of the Board of Education meetings are public, as are the Board of Education budget workshops. While this is really my first year starting to be able to come and become involved with this, as I have small children, I haven't seen a lot of people making those comments at those meetings to listen and give opinions about what is happening with the Board of Education. So while I appreciate that we're coming to you to ask for funding for the Board of Education, issues with how the Board of Education runs their budget should really be brought to their meetings and discussed with them. So it's just a note. But the other thing is that I was a little taken aback when I got to the vote and saw that the numbers are there, but there are no percentages, and I'm wondering if there is a reason for that, or if you can include the percentage increase. I think from my own personal perspective, I've been to all these meetings this year, and I cannot see that, here's our number for Board of Education, five, you know, fifteen million, da-da-da-da-da, it's a three-point what percent increase. I think the public, it would be helpful to the public, I feel, that if you could show that percentage along with the final budget number for people to understand what they're actually voting on. Even, I mean, you're gonna make a change here, and people are gonna say there's a change, but they don't know what that percentage changes, and it would just be a helpful... I don't know if it's possible to do that, but I wonder if you've considered that, or if there's reason not to include it for both the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen, and even the Capital Reserve that you were, you know, it looks misleading to say you're taking it up to, you're adding a hundred thousand to it, but you don't understand that, that, you know, there was a base there. So I don't know if there's a reason.
Well, I think there were two of the Board of Selectmen here, and it is the Selectmen that defined the question, so whether or not it can be done or would be done, I will leave it there.
We, you know, over the years have had those conversations. It is on the advisory questions directly below with the percentages, so if the percentages are there on the...
Oh, yeah, I know. I'm sorry. It's just because it's not in that voting question, I think...
Okay.
I felt, I don't know, I guess I just, I misread myself, so I wouldn't inform the other.
Other comments? And then, well, either way.
I'm Becky Hayes, twenty state of Rich. I would just like to thank you all for acknowledging the classroom overcrowding. It was nice to hear so many of you acknowledge that it needs to be addressed, and you are taking that into account with your members tonight. So I appreciate that. And also, to, I'm sure this is probably the question I just asked Mr. Hayden, but as far as the advisory questions, you all had trouble interpreting the answers, but as a voter, I had trouble answering that question. I didn't know, like, I wanted to vote just right for Mr. Hayden's budget, but there was no just right. I had to vote higher or lower. I didn't...
They used to have that.
Or you didn't have to put one in.
Yeah, but then somebody made a comment, like, you know, there were so many people who just didn't answer that question, so they didn't know how to read into that, so it's very...
That's a good point. That could have been the just right crowd.
My personal perspective is that the hundred votes probably were the just right.
Yeah, yeah, and it didn't occur, it didn't occur that not... I'm of the age of the standardized, standardized testing where you need to fill in every vote.
We certainly review every year. We ask for input from the Board of Finance, and we certainly listen to everything. I mean, some of the way the questions were phrased this year was listening to comments last year from folks like yourself, Aldro and the Board of Finance, on how it would be more meaningful to them, so we'll continue to work on those things. It's hard to get that perfect because it is so subjective.
Right, exactly. All right, thank you.
Yes, Jim?
I just have a quick question. With the overcrowding of the classrooms in the lower grades, are these, is this overcrowding gonna continue up through the grades, that you're gonna have to be hiring teachers as you go along? Or do you expect it to kind of just even out at some point?
They shift the teacher to the grade with the biggest census, so they've done it all at any time, but that, you know...
No, I'm just wondering if the, say there's fifty students in grade three this year, are you gonna continue with that fifty students in fourth, fifth, sixth, all the way up to high school?
Well, I think if you want to quickly answer that one, Joe, I mean, in terms of a more detailed answer, I'd ask that you take that offline, but Joe, do you have a quick answer?
Primary problem is in the elementary grades where you arrive at the number of teachers using mathematics, take the number of students, the policy that you have, and you divide. When you get into the middle and high schools, things aren't done that way because you have different courses, and whether you have seven or seventeen students, you need to offer them. So the short answer to your question is, it really is a problem existing in the elementary grades. Once it's resolved, it should be resolved, and as we move up to the higher grades, the problem isn't as significant. So we probably will not need to keep having teachers. But we do need to have the proper number of classes in the elementary grades. Now, five years ago, or four years ago, we lost a fifth grade teacher through the budget process, and we never recovered from that. In addition, class sizes have been increasing, and we really weren't able to address it. That's what we were hoping to do in this budget, and when we do it, it should be a permanent fix.
May I just add one question, and that is, our enrollment is increasing in East Grand Bay. We're on the good side of the trend at this point. But what happens is, we may have, we may start the year or end the year with fifty students, but there's a lot of movement during the summer, people moving into town, people tend to sell their homes during the summertime, and so by the end of August, that fifty could become fifty-five. Or it could become, you know, a banner year, we, like this year, we actually added ten students in one particular grade. So, you know, it depends on what's happening in terms of families moving in.
I just want to say one thing, because, and I know Dave probably wants to move on here, but they did reduce by a teacher a few years ago, so they do go both directions. And because of the budget restrictions a few years ago, they went to a much larger fifth grade class, and that, you know, so it does go both ways. They do drop off a teacher if they see the need.
Thank you. Leo, you had a comment?
I have a number of comments. I'll try to be brief. First of all, Dave, I don't agree with your request that people limit their comments to only one comment. We have been told by members of the town boards that coming to meetings and making comments is our obligation to provide input. Now, I'm not talking about standing up and making a prepared five-minute speech, but just in that vein, if you limit the number of comments that people can make, then there is no input, there is no ability of the public to provide input. So I don't care if we're here until ten, eleven, or twelve. That's the job of the board, to listen to the public, and this is the only form for the public to provide input. That's number one. Number two, again, in terms of, two members of the Board of Finance this evening made further comments about the public input at the public hearing and the lack or otherwise of public input. I don't know what you're missing here about the fact that twenty or thirty people gather at the public hearings while a thousand or two thousand, whatever number of voters stay home, those voters stay home maybe because they're with their families, or maybe they're not there because they're working, or maybe it's they're at home teaching their kids, but they trust you to count their vote as much as the people who are here speaking up at the public hearing. They're putting their faith in you to do that, okay? And you're saying that you're not doing that, okay? That's not the law. The law is that the budget, is that the vote counts at the referendum. That is the law. Next comment, and that is that I also want to say that the Board of Education presentation this year was superlative. It was better than since I've been paying attention, you know, which hasn't been that long, but without a doubt the best we've heard. Be that as it may, as it has been said, these are children we're talking about, but that negates the fact that we're dealing with hard facts here, and we're dealing with budget, and we're dealing with money that you're taking out of the pockets of the public, and they're, the public is saying that they're willing to only give you this amount of money, okay? If the, if the budget goes up, if the budget requirement to maintain the constant services goes up ten percent, what are you gonna do? The public is not going to agree to that. And my answer to that is that the Board of Education has to come up with a different way of doing things. Okay, the budget problems this year are telling you that the way that you're doing things now have to be changed. That's the message that I get. That's all I'll say for now.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Ed, I've already recognized you, and Joe, if you're responding to that, I would ask you to do that outside the meeting.
Yeah, no, I...
Okay. If you have a comment separate?
Yeah, I do have a couple of comments. I just, there was one particular comment that I just struggled with in meeting this evening, and you know how much work goes into what you do, how much effort, how much time. On the Board of Education, I bet that we put in a new...
Much more.
Say more.
Yeah, I agree. I wasn't going to say that. I was hoping you would.
I wasn't going to say that, I was hoping you would.
We did. I see your, I see your minutes, so.
I remember an earlier meeting where someone said, it'd be really nice if we had, you know, a business owner on the Board of Ed, or even the chair on the Board of Ed. Maybe we could bring that philosophy and those things to the Board of Ed. I guess the one comment that sticks in my mind tonight is unimaginable. Our meetings are public. Please come. Please see if we use our imagination. Don't not attend and imagine that we don't. We try really hard to think outside the box. We're engaging in things that have never been engaged before. It's public knowledge that we're meeting with the Grand Bay school systems. It was all over Facebook today in the conversations. We're in the process of doing an efficiency study. If you know something that we don't know, tell us. If you say something and we disagree with you, let's discuss it. But please, let's work together. This is not the time to be calling each other names or saying derogatory things. We're trying to work together. I hope that that was evident this year. Please keep that in mind so we can continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say that's a fine last word, but.
I was gonna make a motion, but public comments still.
What is this? No further comments?
I just thought that was a good note to leave on.
Yeah, one comment per night, okay?
I'm sorry?
I just thought that was a good note to leave on.
Yeah, it was a good one.
So, I move to.
One comment per night?
One comment per person in each of the sessions, in each of the public comment.
I've been making a second comment.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. You gotta remember, guys, when you're doing what you're doing, you've got to have the ability to pay for the part of the citizens of the community. And I'm not hearing that, no. And, you know, we don't live in a vacuum. Numbers, dollars to dollars, whatever. The ability to pay, liquidity of the community, you've really got to figure out a way to do that before you make a vote. Okay, that's it.
I just want to say, I just want to say one last thing, and that's, I want to thank everybody that's come out this year. I've been impressed with the response of the public on, you know, and the way that people articulated. I just want to encourage you to stay involved regardless of how this referendum works out, because those of us that have been involved for a few years can see the ups and downs, and it's definitely, it's heartening to me to see the folks come out. And remember, more importantly than anything else, that the budgets, the direction of the town, everything is decided in November. This is budget season. So make sure you stay involved through the whole year.
I'll say that, Jim. I move to a adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our adjourn, thank you all, and thank you all for helping.